Okay, today is Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019. I called the Village Board to meet in order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Zarnik?
Here.
Trustee Feiter?
Here.
Trustee Frankie?
Here.
Trustee Listener?
Here.
Trustee Petry?
Here.
Trustee Prochnow?
Here.
Okay, all Board members are present tonight, so we have a full quorum. Next, we have the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight's invocation is from Father Fred at Queen of the Rosary Church. One, please rise. Father, a few words, please. It is now on his first trip west. Traveling on a bus tour was unmoved by the scenery, scoffed at the Grand Canyon, yawned at the petrified forest and the painted desert, and had no interest at all in Yellowstone Park. When the bus driver had had too much of the carping and indifference, he finally turned to the fellow and said quietly, "Mr., when you haven't got it in the inside, you can't see it on the outside. The best and most beautiful things in the world cannot be seen or even touched; they must be felt in the heart. Gracious and loving God, in this time of Easter and season of spring, may we recognize the beauty in creation, our village, our leadership, and, most importantly, in one another. We ask this through Christ our Lord, and so we say amen." Amen. Amen to the Father's. The flags to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Father, before you go here. I'd give someone, Trustee Frankie, but we haven't heard yet, but we're working on it.
According to him, I don't have much longer to go.
Okay. We move on now to the approval of the minutes of April 9th, 2019.
I move that we approve the minutes of April 9th and dispense with the reading.
Second.
Motion passes. Oh, I'm sorry. We have a motion by Trustee Petry, a second by Trustee Zarnik, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the Director choose your answer's approval. Do you notice the gun detective thing went off when the priest went through it? It just did, didn't it? Okay. We move on now to Mayor, Board, and Trustees' report. Couple of things. On April 11th, I had the opportunity to go to the Rotary Club's weekly meeting. Gave a little state of the village. Actually, we did something unique. It was strictly questions and answers that day. And Helen, I almost did that at our meeting today. It was really good, because I know a lot of people had questions today. I'm thinking when we do it in October, maybe we just do questions and answers for the start. That people just ask anything they may have. So we can talk about it as it gets closer. I just, because it went well with the Rotary Club. They had plenty of questions. There were a lot of questions. They're hiding, huh?
Hiding, yeah.
It was very good, though. We also had a, actually, Mr. Knickerbocker came out a little bit. We did a special TV shoot for, doing a Channel 6 doing thing about all of our concerts over the years and how we did. That was fun. And then had a meeting with Principal Paul Kelly. They're looking to expand their manufacturing class they have. Elk Grove High School worked with the village and Harper College, and we're doing a lot of classes on manufacturing, teaching kids to go in the manufacturing field. Not every kid's going to go to college. And manufacturers, we know of one kid in particular, who's coming out of an internship into a program, he'll be paid $80,000 a year. When he gets fully trained and operational, he's going to make $150,000 a year in a manufacturing job. And he started off at Elk Grove High School, going through their program. There's good money to be made out there. Not everyone has to go to college. So that was good. Also, talked to the seniors today. Met with the seniors today, enjoyed that meeting. It went very well. We thank you again, as always. I do it. Before I forget, it is Trustee Prochnow's actual birthday today.
Is.
Not nearby, actually today is her birthday. So happy birthday on behalf of the village. It's nice that you turned a big three-oh today, Mr. Knickerbocker.
Very happy for you.
You didn't have to tell everybody how old I was.
Yeah, I was Trustee Feiter.
But thank you very much. I can't think of a nicer group of people I'd like to spend my birthday with.
Trustee Prochnow, I agree with you wholeheartedly. You're exactly right.
I want to, and I'd like to thank the officers outside. When I walked in today, they serenaded with, serenaded me and sang happy birthday to me.
And Scott.
Well, that's right. May 1st is the new fiscal year. That means pay raises come. Okay. We understand. Okay. But that's very sweet. Happy birthday, Matthew.
Thank you very much.
Also, a couple of quick things. You know, we talked about Elk Grove Cares, which I talked again about today with the seniors. Elk Grove Cares program's doing very well. A lot of people in it wish they didn't need it, but it's doing well. But what's very impressive was, back on, hang on a second, I got the Tribune, back on the 15th of April, Tax Day, in the editorial section, they did a nice article about the opioid crisis in Illinois and how to combat drug overdoses. And who do they highlight in here? One promising step deserves a note. A new law took effect this year to promote efforts by law enforcement agencies to deflect people with substance abuse problems from criminal justice system into treatment. Among involved are Elk Grove Village, right there. So our program is revolutionary. It is having an effect. I mean, obviously, we wish it wasn't as bad as it is, but we are making efforts to try to help people, resolve their issues, and get them over the disease, the disease of addiction. It's not self-inflicted, it's a disease. And please remember that. That's always important to remember. Mind when I'm talking about police and drug overdose? Again, we warn people, I talked to the seniors about it today. We could eliminate, would you say 95% of the car break-ins in chief? Probably 95% of the car break-ins with one simple step. Lock your cars. Lock your cars. I already told you about what happened to my son's car. We have a trustee sit up here who has a camera system and caught, and was given to the police to look at, caught a guy coming up to the house, trying the car door, his house, trying his car door, it was locked, walk away.
Run.
Run away. You know what trustee is now. We had another one where the car pulled up in front of the house, looked like they had like a flashlight or something looking at cars. He's got, we got, we saw the video. The guy gets out here in Elk Grove, goes up, tries the car handles, goes back in his car, drives away. That is what's happening, folks. They don't want to break into your car. They want to open it and steal what they can for a quick fix. We are, one thing that's great in America today is all these ring doorbells and other camera systems. We get a ton of people sending us stuff. We know who some of these people are. We just got to catch them. We don't know who some are, but we know what kind of car they drive, we know what their appearance is, we know, you know, we have that. We just got to catch them. But again, 95% of the thefts would be stopped, just lock your car. Unfortunately, it's not like when I grew up in Elk Grove. People didn't even lock their houses when I grew up in Elk Grove. It's not that same way anymore, folks. Lock your cars, it's going to save you a lot of problems. Just ask Craig Jr., who lost $200 cash in his credit card. He found out the hard way why you lock your car. Brittany, his wife, luckily, did the right thing. She had no problem in her car. So please, lock your cars. You stop a lot of the crime going on. And again, Elk Grove Cares, hopefully, will help these people that need help, and that will help eliminate some of the crime, too. It can be a win-win situation on that. Finally, I know people have been talking a lot about the condition of our roads. Obviously, we're well aware of it. We were talking tonight a little bit to the board. You know, 15 years ago, we used to brag about we provided the best streets in all northwest suburbs. And, you know, I've been noticing, talking to the mayor, seeing what's going on. Matter of fact, the new mayor in Schaumburg, and I congratulate Tom Daley, taking over Al Larson, a very good man, his first budget he presided over, and he said, "Mayor-elect Tom Daley, increasing road repair funds more than imminent in the budget." Daley said he would like to see $2 million of extra reserves spent on road repairs. He said he's aware of how hard the village's streets and roads were hit this past winter. What we're finding out, and we talked to a lot of towns, managers, I talked to a lot of mayors, it seems like Schaumburg's town is about 60 years old, Elk Grove about 60 years old, Rollin Meadows about 60 years old. A lot of towns, when the roads were put in, two things happened. One, a lot of roads were put in, we've talked about it before, with what they call pozolonic bases. That was the inexpensive way to put in bases, to save towns' money, supposedly to catch great, catch off for road bases. We know now it's probably the worst thing that's happened. They are not holding up, they're falling apart. But just also the age of the streets. And this past winter especially, but other ones, remember we had all that snow at the end of the year, last April? Snow's in the year when it's getting warm, the pavements are warming, thawing, you know, a little bit, snow's freezing, really hurts them bad. So past couple of years, we've had effect, just like in our neighboring towns. And so what's happened is, and I give Tom Kobe credit, or, I'm sorry, Kobe credit, I'm reading Tom Daley, Kobe credit, he's putting together an analysis of every street in this village. You know, the old-fashioned way was you took a core plug, drilled down, went in, took a sample out. They don't have to do that anymore. They can do electronically, seismatically, a lot of ways they can do it. And they're analyzing every street in this village, looking at its substructure, its base. And they've been working on it for a couple of months, they're going to keep working on it. And by the end of the summer, early fall, Kobe's going to come back with a recommendation for this board to incorporate it in our 2025 plan. And it's going to talk about what streets need the quickest work done, how much work's got to be done. And it's going to be a five to eight-year project, which ties in with the 2025 plan, to get them as update, as complete as possible. If you notice, a lot of our streets, the problems are not in the middle of the street, it's along the curbs. Several things there. One, that's where the buses go, that's where the garbage trucks go, that's where delivery trucks go, they tend to go along that curb area. Lot more wear and tear with heavy equipment. Secondly, as we worked on resurfacing, you know, as we're getting a little higher mound, we probably should have been grinding the streets down a little more in the middle, because we have a higher mound, it forces a lot more water to go to the corners, they sit longer, creates more wear and tear. So we're going through a full analysis, we'll present to the community in the summer, early fall, about how we want to address the problem. The second thing we started talking about is how we want to look at drainage issues in front yards. Remember, we've had a rear yard drainage program for 20-some years now, that's been very successful. We now, now are turning our focus to the front yards. So Kobe's also doing GPS analysis, overview analysis of water runoff, where water's standing, all that. You know, he's got a program that other towns have used, and we're going to come back by the end of the year with analysis of that, of what we need to address, how to address it, and take care of. Some, maybe just as simple as sidewalks have stepped, or gone down, or people have built the ground up around sidewalks, maybe it's to be shaved down a little bit to help drainage and all that. So we're going to be looking at all that. So that'll be coming soon. The other thing we're going to be talking about with people is sump pumps. Not all, but a lot of the problem we have is people are running the sump pumps to the front yard. They're not meant to go to the front yard. Sump pumps are meant to drain to the backyard. We have drainage swales in backyards, they're handling, they take it away. People are letting it go to the front yard, the neighbor's yard, and we're seeing some areas where the water's just pulling up, especially this winter, we had freezing up into little lakes, little ice skating rinks. So we're going to be looking at all those issues and coming up with a comprehensive plan by the end of the year. Right, Kobe, on that one? So our goal is to have the roadway planned by the end of summer, early fall, and the drainage issue, water detention issue by the end of the year. We're going to incorporate all that in our 2025 plan. So unfortunately, maybe it ended up being 2026, 27, whatever, but we're still going to call it 2025, because a lot of things happen in 2025. So we're going to work on that, be patient, we're obviously as aware as anybody else what's going on in our community. And like I say, it's just ironic that, you know, the future mayor of Schaumburg, Mayor Tom Daley, is talking about the exact same thing in their town. I know Rollin Meadows is looking at it, other towns are looking at it, and so we're all about the same age. So we're all going through the same troubles. So we're going to get those addressed and taken care of, and we look forward to working with the community about that in the near future. Last thing before I go to the trustees is Saturday, May 4th, which is a week from Saturday, is our next Coffee with the Board. It's held right outside the chambers here. We invite anybody that wants to come by, come by. We always have garage bakery goods here, coffee, orange juice. Welcome to come, ask any questions, any concerns, any comments, any praises, right, Mr. Knickerbocker?
Certainly.
Yeah. How many of those are there? Nah. So welcome, come by. The whole board's usually able to come to that. It'd be Trustee Petry's last coffee. So look forward to that with the board, and we welcome you to come by and definitely see us. If anything, just come by and say hi. I know Helen, you know, you two like to come sometimes. If one can't make it, the other one comes, so that here. I know Paul Petzel shows up, so love to have you there, love to talk to you, and I'll meet with you and see what's going on here in the village.
Mayor, could you say what hours?
9:00 to 11:00 a.m. Right out here. And again, it's just an informal way to get to talk, and we've gotten some good ideas over the years from people, and we've incorporated them in the village. So, you know, we first admit, we don't know everything by any means. We'd love to hear ideas, suggestions, and we've done that, and it's done very well. So with that said, we move on now to Trustees' Report. We'll start with Trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
No report.
Trustee Listener?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one thing. Tomorrow morning, I plan on attending the Park District's Arbor Day Celebration, it's being held at the Edendorf Center at 10 o'clock. And that concludes my report.
And we've been Tree City USA for a long time. Back in the Zetix days, we were, so we're very good with that, especially with all that we want to with the Emerald Bar Ash, make sure we keep that up. Okay, Trustee Petry?
Yes, on April 14th, I attended the both the SWAN Solid Waste Agency of Northern Cook County and the Northwest Municipal Conference at Oakton College. And I was recognized at both of those. And when I was at the Northwest, Al Larson also was, and he and Bill McCloud and I were standing there together. I got three hugs from Al Larson, by the way. Between the three of us, we had 148 years of service.
Wow.
It was like lightning struck me. I couldn't believe it. Bunch of old coots.
Well, Bill McCloud was talking to us at that luncheon. He was a trustee since 1980. He was trustee for 20 years.
Right.
And when Mike O'Malley passed away, he got promoted up to, so he was 20 years trustee and now almost 20 years as a mayor.
Right. And he was on that first cable, and I taught him well, and yeah, he and Al. Al not so good, they went a different way, but it was, it was interesting. I also attended this past Friday, intended, attended retirement ceremony for Robert Cook at, at the Public Works, 39 years, and he's going to go fifth-wheeling, he says. He drives all the big stuff anyway, so that'll be right up his alley. And then I came back here for Mike Delphal.
Delphal.
Delphal. Yeah, his, he was 40 years for his retirement. And I got to see quite a few of the old guys that returned. Larry Hammer, Mike Lever, Steve Frindl, some of those guys, Pam Cook. So that was, that was really nice to see that. So, and that's all I have.
So you're retiring with good company.
Yes.
Trustees' Honor.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind everyone that there are six $1,000 scholarships for the Frank J. Zarnik Scholarship Memorial. It's available to Elk Grove Village residents graduating this year from high school. It can assist them in their endeavors next year. Applications are on zarnikgolf.com and Elk Grove Village websites, and they must be received by May 3rd. So please remember to get those in, short time. And also asking to save the date and join us for the annual Frank Zarnik Scholarship Golf Outing, which is Friday, August 9th at 1:00 p.m. This is the only way that we raise money for the scholarship program. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustees' Honor. Trustee Feiter?
Yes, I attended the full board of the Me Chicago Northwest last week. That is, if you don't know, that's our hotel and tourist organization that Elk Grove, Itasca, Schaumburg, Arlington Heights, and I think one or two more are all part of that. And Wooddale, I know, is. And of course, our whole purpose is to promote tourism and, you know, in our communities, at our hotels, and our restaurants. And we heard reports, the reports on our hotels, real good, that a lot of people came there during the winter, are coming there now, a lot of signed up, a lot of rooms signed up for events in the future. That was the good news. The bad news was about restaurants. And I heard that some of the restaurants, not all, but some of them, had, are going through a rough time right now. And we were told at it, it kind of boiled down to three things. One was, of course, as you know, the really bad winter we had. People just stayed home, and they didn't go to the restaurants, and a lot of them suffered a lot with this. One place, the owner told me, his normal daily income is around $6,000, and he only had about $3,000 coming in during that. And he says, "It's really tough, and a lot of the vendors are afraid to come and give restaurants the supplies they need, because they don't know if they're going to be paid." So it was tough. The winter made it bad. Some other things they mentioned was, of course, competition. And an awful lot of the restaurants that are privately owned, as opposed to the franchise, are struggling with this. You know, one guy said, "You know, eventually, we're going to go from suburb to suburb, and it's going to be nothing but franchise restaurants, like Olive Garden and ones like that everywhere, and we won't have the private ones if, if this trend continues." And then the millennials were blamed. The millennials. Supposedly, the millennials don't like to go out too much to spend money to eat, they stay home, and one restaurateur said, "And they drink cheap wine." So, so those were some of the reasons that I was told, that the restaurants are kind, some restaurants are having a difficult time. Not all of them, but some are right now. But it's across the whole area. You know, the main thing, I think, was the rough winter. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Feiter. Trustee Prochnow?
Thank you. We are winding down on our Winter's Farmers Market, but we do have one this Saturday, April 27th, at the Christus Victor Church on Arlington Heights Road across from the movie theater. It goes from 8:00 a.m. till 1:00 p.m. We have some vegetables, some bread, some sauces, some honeys, some crafts, some fresh meat, some poultry, some eggs, some dairy things. It's kind of a mishmash of things, but it's all very fresh and very, very good. And we encourage you all to visit the farmer's market, while we still have it. Pretty soon this summer, one will be starting up, but right now, we're still at the church. And then I'd also like to announce that Boy Scout Troop 95 is having their annual Pancake Breakfast and Silent Auction, and that will be on, let's see, where's the date here? Sunday, May 5th, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Queen of the Rosary Church, which is located on the corner of JFK and the, and the Elk Grove Boulevard. And they have a huge selection of auction items. This is a major fundraiser for Troop 95, so I encourage all of you to come and enjoy. My husband and I go every year. We always find something to bid on, and that's my excuse for getting pancakes. I don't normally allow myself to eat pancakes, but they're so yummy, and they serve them with blueberries and strawberries, and whipped cream, and chocolate chips, and butter and syrup.
That sounds good.
See, you all should be coming down. And, and the cost for attending, a family can attend for $15, adults are $5, seniors over 60 are $4, and children are $4. So it's a very reasonable price to pay. And again, let's support our Boy Scout troop, because they volunteer so much in our community year-round and give right back to the community. So mark your calendar, Sunday, May 5th, Queen of the Rosary. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Move on now to Accounts Payable Warrant, April 23rd, 2019.
I move that we pay bills to the Accounts Payable Warrant for April 23rd in an amount of $1,946,731.3.
Second. Motion by Trustee Petry, I say by Trustee Zarnik. Lori, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Feiter?
Yes.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Listener?
Aye.
Trustee Petry?
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye. Motion passes six to nothing. Today, Mr. Knickerbocker, we have consent agenda items A as in?
Attorney.
Through X. Oh, wait to say X.
Use the right one this time.
The X.
Zionophone.
No, the X Attorney.
Actually, you, oh.
I thought you were X Attorney.
I thought you were going to use the Zionophone the way it's supposed to be.
Doesn't X start with an E?
No. That's perfect. X Attorney. That works out. So we have motion, are we have items A through X? I need a motion.
I am so moved.
Second.
We have motion, a motion from Trustee Zarnik, second by Trustee Frankie. Mr. Romo, you want to make a correction?
I do. Item P on the agenda is ordinance number 3406, and the Village Board has determined that soon-to-be trustee Stephen F. Schmidt shall be the village's designated to the Joint Action Water Agency, and trustee Nancy Zarnik will be the second alternate to the Joint Action Water Agency.
Okay, so we will make the necessary adjustments? Anything else?
No, sir, that was it.
Does anybody in the audience have any comments, questions on the consent agenda? And does Trustee Frankie and Trustee Zarnik amend their motions? So, yes?
Well, have we done a background check on this guy yet, or?
On who?
On the new trustee?
Yeah. I mean, he can take over?
He's smiling. How can you not like that smiley face?
Okay, be smiling, and I'm all right with it.
He reminds me of MacGuff the Crime Dog, whatever, you know? So, okay, so we have motion second, without objection, call the vote as presented, six to nothing. Regular agenda, Mr. Knickerbocker? I mean, not Mr. Romo?
You do have a request from the Von Fassen, Von Fossen, sorry, Dan, Family Chiropractic Center to install a sign at 1020 Elk Grove Town Center. Because of the zoning at the town center, every sign needs to be approved by the Village Board. This sign would and does meet our sign ordinance, and a copy of it was included in your care package, should you like to see it. And I see the owner of the chiropractic center is here, should you have any questions.
Which unit is yours? We're trying, we're trying to figure that out earlier.
Do you remember what the dance studio used to be on the backside of the building?
Yes.
Right there.
So you're on the backside of the building?
Yes, it used to be the, the architect was there as well.
Okay. Could I, I noticed a signed picture on it, thinking, it didn't look like the front of the building, that's why I was trying to figure out. Okay.
Right, yeah, it's going to be the backside.
Yeah, right at the back, the dance studio used to go back that way. Right from the, the movie theater.
Oh, okay.
Is on the other side.
Yes, yes.
So you crack your back, and then you go watch a movie. Works good. Any questions, concerns?
Just voiceful?
Yeah.
I need a motion to approve. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
The motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Listner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed. You're set to go.
That's great.
Good luck to you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay. Okay, Plan Commission, Mr. Romo?
Mayor Board of Trustees.
What?
I was just telling him he's good, he doesn't have to stay.
Oh, yeah. No, no, you're, you're good.
We have no items this evening under the Plan Commission, and we have no items under the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay. We move on now to Youth Committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Flankie.
I'm sure everybody's happy to hear that this will probably be the last time I'll announce this, because all these scholarship applications are due by May 3rd, which is a Friday. They need to be postmarked on that day. So please get them in. I know they're starting to come in now, but we've got seven $1,000 scholarships, and we've got three or four extra ones because of a fundraiser by Microphone Brewery, so we thank them for that. So please get your applications in. Alls you have to do is make sure that you're going on to a further education. Doesn't have to be regular college, it could be a trade school, something like that, but it's free money, come and get it. So get those applications in. We'll announce the winners after, probably be the first week of June now, because we have to schedule a meeting to pick them, and cannot do it on Memorial Day weekend. So we'll pick it right after that. So we will notify the winners by the first week of June. That's it.
Very good. Business Leaders Forum, trustee Petry.
I will defer to my associate, Mr. Listner.
Thank you, trustee Petry. On April 10th, Nancy, Josh, and I, trustee, trustee Zarnik, had a very interesting visit to Dumac. That's the company I mentioned last meeting, that the only product they make is marshmallows. And this was really interesting. Now, we went through the entire plant. In fact, we took a tour to go through the plant, obviously, but we had to, you know, put the hairnets on, and the lab coats, take off all jewelry, and a few other things. But anyway, it was, it was really interesting. Most of this process is automated. They had a, hit a, some machines with a hammer once in a while because of all the go, going around, but they made so many, in fact, they shipped to 73 countries, which made me ask, how many countries are there in the world?
196.
Well, I had 195, but, close enough.
One just got taken over.
Yeah. But anyway, it's, it's really, I don't, trustee Zarnik, would you like to add anything?
It was, it really, it really was fascinating. And the Dumac, the brand name is Campfire, if you remember from years ago, the campfire mushroom, uh, mushrooms, marshmallows, big difference.
Let me add mushrooms, too, but that's a different story.
Mushroom flavor.
But the other item that I thought was interesting is to see it go through, see them cut, and then how they take the cornstarch and they put it through, as trustee Listner said, it's all automated. But we did get to eat, you know, pick them off of the line.
Yeah. Um, um.
What?
Um. You got your package. I never got one. Josh had a package for you, talk to him.
They have, they brought a bunch, and they were on the counter. I stole the rest of them that were left over.
Yeah.
I never saw.
They were really good. Well, oh, they were good. They, they have these really huge, they're, they're like about this big, these, what they call smores, smore mush, mush.
Mushrooms.
Are those the new ones with the chocolate inside of them?
No, mushrooms inside.
No, no, no.
But there is a new one coming out.
There is some new ones coming out we couldn't talk about. We were told that we couldn't say anything.
How did you know?
But he told, he spoke.
I didn't know.
But anyway, it was, it really was a fascinating tour, and, and delicious.
Mushrooms.
I wouldn't know.
Well, that's tough. Yeah. Take my report. Okay. Anything further?
Yes, yes. I just want to mention, on April 26th, we're going to visit Moss Incorporated. I don't know if you've heard of them, but they make, maybe you have, Jeff.
Mushrooms?
No, not mushrooms.
Mushrooms.
Maybe.
No, they make displays for trade shows.
Oh, yeah.
And offices, and all sorts of events. It's, really looks interesting, yeah. So we're going to be visiting them, probably won't have any samples, but that's our trip for this week.
Yeah, samples one, I would know. Okay, we move on now to Cable Television Committee, trustee Listner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Another meeting is scheduled for May 1st in Pelotine to discuss the Comcast franchise renewal. We'll be meeting with towns from, obviously, Pelotine, Hoffman Estates, Rowley Meadows, and Buffalo Grove, obviously Elk Grove's going to be there also. And we'll see where it goes. It's going to take a while. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Health and Community Services, trustee Zarnik.
Along the mushroom line, no. You may need a break, or your loved one some additional company, and there's help. A caring place is a respite program available from 9:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays at Christus Victor Church. It's a socialization program for adults. It's now partnered with In Touch Home Care, and they offer services that can give you an affordable daily ride, a, a ride to the respite program. It's an affordable daily rate, and they can provide services, including transportation, as well as assistance. Call 847-437-2666, extension 24, and the program is organized and supervised by trained and caring staff. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Information Committee, trustee Listner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things. One, the police department has announced a new improved neighborhood watch program that goes way back, but this one is, is going to be really, I think, much more, much more technology going into this program. There's going to be a meeting on May 29th for all Elk Grove residents that are interested in coming to the meeting. It's going to be in the village hall in room E from 6:30, 8:30, again, on May 29th. So if you can make it, and anybody listening, I think it'd be well worthwhile. As the mayor said, there has been more crime because of drugs or whatever things, and these will be tips people could pick up on how they could help reduce those and help their neighbors as well as themselves. Another item is the committee is going to meet, is scheduled to meet on May 13th at 9:00 a.m. to discuss some improvements to the village website. And that's, I have one more thing that just came in, a press release.
Breaking news.
Breaking news, yeah. No one's seen this, yes, and since there's no reporters here tonight, we're probably going to have to send this to the newspapers. But Elk Grove TV has won three awards in the Wisconsin Community Media Alliance for community, community media Midwest region. But this is really impressive, to see Elk Grove TV continuing to get these types of awards. The three programs that received the awards are the 2018 Tree Lighting Ceremony, the PSA was awarded an achievement award in the professional category. Another one was the Internet Purchase PSA was awarded a merit award, and in the same category. And Elk Grove Update also won an achievement award. This is really quite a bit. The announcement's pretty long, and since it's print small, I'm going to cut it short, but producer Scott Marinette should be very proud of what he's done to gain these awards, and of course, Ross Rowe and the rest of the staff, I'm sure, played a big part. So I'm glad to announce this, and hopefully, we could send this to the Daily Herald and the Elk Grove Journal to get it out there, too. And of course, we can announce it on Channel 6. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Listner. Recycling Waste Committee, trustee Feigter.
Yes, a couple items. This Saturday, we have the National Takeback Day. It's sponsored by the Drug Enforcement Administration in cooperation with the Elk Grove Police Department. And what they're asking people to do is to take drugs that they have sitting around at home that they don't use. Some of them, I'm sure this is the case with many people, been sitting there for six months, a year, two years, three years, whatever. And, you know, it's hard sometimes for people to want to get rid of them, but they should, get them out of the house. And, you know, one of the things is that these young people that go looking around for opiates and so forth, if they get into a house, that's one of the first things they look for. They go to the bathrooms, and they open them up and look to see if there's drugs in there. And so if you have anything, like any drugs at all, that you want to dispose of, bring them to the police department between 10:00 and 2:00 p.m. on this Saturday, the 27th of April, and there's no questions asked. They'll just take them in and dispose of them. And it's a good thing to do, just to get them out of your house. Sometimes, you know, I find that with myself. You keep some of the stuff around that you've had from doctors before, you don't get rid of them, it's a good thing. Use this opportunity. Get rid of them on Saturday. Also, coming up, June 1st, we are going to have recycling, paper recycling, you know, document destruction, and we're going to have electronic recycling at the Petry Public Works Facility between 9:00 and noon, right there on Devon, so you bring your paper, electronic items there, and you can get rid of them. And we usually have a very big turnout for that, so it's a real good thing. And then the other is June 8th, and that'll be for paint and motor oil at the same location, the Petry Facility on Devon. So keep, write those down so you don't forget. And again, we usually have a pretty big turnout for those, so you want to come early. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Feigter. Parade Committee, trustee Zarnik.
Thank you. We're looking for applications for the coming parade on Saturday, September 21st, and this is in conjunction with our Oktoberfest. So please join us and get those applications in, so we can make sure everyone is included. Remember also that Elk Grove Food Pantry will be collecting food along the parade route. So if you'll bring an item or two that you'd like to put in their carts as they go along the parade route, and we're happy to acknowledge the people who make this parade more successful. Our sponsors this year are ANH Plumbing and Heating, Atlas Holding, Chicago Offset, Crosstown Electric and Incorporated, Dars Holding Group Limited, Elk Grove Chamber of Commerce, Grove Memorial Chapel, Jerry Castle &amp; Son High Lift Incorporated, and the center. Thank you for, for your support. Our next meeting is May 6th, 5:30, room E of the Zetic Municipal Building. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Yes, trustee Frankie?
Being that I don't have a spot on that, now that Oktoberfest is tied in, can I kind of add on to?
Please.
You know, because we are changing Oktoberfest also. We are going to open Oktoberfest on Saturday at 3:00 now, and we're going to try to make, get more family-friendly. So we're going to have kids' games, and also some blow-up slides and, not a house.
Jumping house.
Jump, yeah, but, yeah, something, but since the people will be going to the parade, the families, they can come over Oktoberfest then. And so we're going to try to incorporate, like I said, kids will be able to do some relay things and stuff to win, maybe a hat or something, and also, you know, the families can come and eat. So we will be opening at 3:00 on Saturday now, right after the parade.
And the kids' events are stopped by about, what, 6:00 or so?
Yeah, so, you know, so the families can come and maybe eat a late, or early dinner or something like that. I mean, kids have always been welcome, but it's just that, you know, it's more parents later on in the evening.
It's more kids' time.
Yeah, but we're, we're trying to make this more a family-friendly kind of thing on Saturday.
You know, especially with the parade, because we're hoping that it just kind of flows, flows together.
Right. Yeah, it's, you know, because it was, people would come to Oktoberfest afterwards, so we, we just want to make it so, you know, people get a different culture, you know, that they can deal with, so. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Personnel Committee, trustee Frankie.
Oh, that's me again. I meant to ask Kobe this question before. Have we filled all our summer jobs and, for, say, the part-time?
I believe we filled 19, excuse me, 14 out of 19 open slots.
So they're still looking for, possibly? Well, now that we've said that, if you're interested in possible summer job, please go to the village website for an application. It's, what is it, 10 weeks?
College, and it's college age.
You have to be in college, and you have to prove that also. It's 10 weeks worth of time?
May through first week of August.
Yeah, I think, I'm pretty sure, okay. So there's four more spots open. It's, it's a great part-time job for anybody who's in college, so try to apply. If not, maybe it'll be good for next year, so.
And if you get hired, you'll be rehired, if you do a good job.
If you do a good job, you automatically can come back the next year.
And when we were younger, you couldn't get those jobs, they were lined up for it, and now we can't fill them every year.
You know, it's funny, there was a waiting list forever, and that's why.
And the pay is good. I mean, we pay, what do we, what do we?
It's like 11 or 12 bucks an hour.
Yeah, 11, 12 dollars. I mean, the pay is good.
For part-time for just a summer? Yeah.
No, no, it's great, but you know what? A lot of colleges now are asking their students to do summer internships in their line of study.
That's true.
And to prepare them, and so that kind of diminishes the pool.
True, but also, you know, that's money they need to have for spending money, because a lot of kids pay their own school, so, you know, there's, you know, they can't always do it every year to do what you said, but, you know.
JPC Committee, trustee Proctno.
Thank you. The JPC Committee met on April 1st to discuss parking regulations within the industrial park. It come to our attention that we've had the same parking restrictions since probably the 70s or 80s. Right now, on-street parking in the industrial park is 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. only, and some of our, some of our companies within the industrial park are having later hours, or their employees are staying later, and it came to our attention that it might be a good time to review those parking restrictions. So we had the committee meeting and asked Chief Walsh to look into a few things. Some of the issues were lighting. If lighting was good enough for there to be later parking at night in the industrial park. We also asked how many tickets were issued for violators after the 7:00 p.m. in the past three years, and we asked the cost of replacing, because if we do change the parking hours, we have to change all the signs in the industrial park. So we were looking for a cost analysis on that. Chief Walsh recently gave us his report with information on that, and the JPC Committee will be getting back together again to discuss what information we've received and how we want to move forward, or not move forward, with the recommendation of the chief. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Proctno. Trustee Zarnik, Capital Improvement Committee.
Thank you. Tanglewood Drive Water Replacement is progressing in the north, on, to the northeast along Tanglewood towards Ridgewood Drive. This project is scheduled to be completed by the end of June. The resurfacing project on Lively Boulevard from Devon to Land Meyer began April 22nd. Delay should be expected for the duration of the project, and that's to be completed by the end of September. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. There's nothing reported on up, on the airport. Summer Concert Series opened with Melissa Etheridge on July 4th. Then we go to Boss Skaggs at Thomas Center on July 9th. 16th, we have Commodores. 7th, or 16th, 23rd, we have Winona the Big Noise, and then we finish up on the 30th with Night Ranger. Special Events is coming up very soon. I just signed all the letters.
We just put out, we just, we had our meeting, I had my meeting with our, our secretary, and we're very excited. We had a little confusion about the, about the choir, but we got that.
But it's all worked out.
It's all worked out, thank you very much.
That's my, partly my fault, too.
And that's okay.
I'm Mr. Kurt, Kurt.
That's why, that's why we get things done early, so that we're well-prepared for anything that might happen. But we're, we're excited and looking forward to another Memorial Day ceremony.
Should be good. So that's set to go. No report on the liquor commission. Report from village manager.
I have no report this evening.
Report from village clerk.
No report.
See if everything's finished on the attorney. As usual, nothing there. And so we move on now. Any new business ideas before we go out the audience? Seeing none, hearing none again. Hope you're wondering, the Swearingen will take place on May 28th.[1667.94] I assume we're gonna still be doing the library that night, too. The two library trustees elected. Pardon?
I haven't gone there yet.
I'm sorry. Are you in a hurry, Mr. Nick about that?
No, I am not.
Are you in a rush to get out for some reason?
Maybe.
Maybe a plane to catch?
Maybe.
Yeah? Remember, it's ex-attorney, so it makes sense.
I know.
So the 28th will be the night that we'll do the swearing-in. There'll be no public commentary that night. There'll be a minimal board meeting. I'm not there yet.
I thought you were, I know.
I'm gonna jump in the gun here.
You know, are we done?
I guess.
Are we done?
So we, so that'll happen on the 28th, and we look forward to that meeting. Now, with that complete, now it's public comment time. I found the order of the agenda, as the due is designated. This is the time we allow people to address the board, any questions, comments, concerns they have. All asked dues come down on the podium, state your name and address for the public record. Well, ma'am, come on down.
Well, hi there. My name is Margot Carroll, and I own the property at 991 Cooper Court.
And your, your residence address, Ms. Carroll?
Pardon me?
You own the property, what's your residence address?
I, my residence is in Bensonville.
Okay. Only reason we ask is in case we have to get something back to you, wanna be able to mail it to you, any information you may need. So that's why for plug record, we get the full address.
Oh.
So is that the P.O. box you want us to use that you provided?
Yes, that's it.
Okay. That's perfect, fine, ma'am. Go ahead.
And the reason I'm here tonight, I made a few notes here, and I'd just like to say, I'm really here for your help. I have tried for five years working with your engineering department, Mike and Ron, and I'm getting nothing but just talk about, my problem is a sump pump discharge from my neighbor behind my property. He has been flooding my property now for fif, for five years. I've owned the property for 14. I don't know what happened five years ago, but he decided he was gonna start routing all of his water with an extension to his sump pump discharge line right to my, my property. His property sits a little bit higher than mine, so his sump pump is being charged at full force. He's killed all the vegetation. A huge tree that's probably 40 years old is completely dead now. My fence, my cyclone fencing has raised up. The yard is completely unusable. I have had, I've got pictures of all of this, and if you would like to see them, I, I've put them in these folders here. But the destruction to my property is just unbelievable. He's, he's ruining my, not just my property, but my appreciation value on my property is being destroyed. And that I would know because I'm a retired real estate broker for 30 years. So I know what he's doing to my property. I've tried to ask this man several times over five years to please stop flooding my property, and he refuses. So I'm here to ask for help. I don't know what else to do. I've been going along to get along, but the people in your engineering department and community department are not giving me any help.
Can, would you mind pass those pictures?
Yes.
The officer will get them for me.
Absolutely.
Now, Ms. Carroll, we got a, actually, we got a contact, and I wanted to thank you very much. Hang on a second, let me take a look at this. Now, oh, six, okay, I was gonna say, your yard looked pretty nice, but that's six years ago. That's before.
Yeah, that's before the destruction, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Because our, I, I thanked the, I guess, talked to the mayor of Bensonville.
I did.
Yeah. And he contacted, he contacted the village, you know, let us know that you had an issue and all that with that. We have gone out, we've got the records, we've gone out and actually talked to your tenant several times, and your tenants said there was no problem. But that's your tenant, and it's not the owner.
My tenant took those pictures.
Yeah, and he had told us that there was no problem, but what we're gonna do is this.
No, that's not true. My tenants are the people that are trying to use the yard for five years and they can't. And they've been in there, they've just signed their seventh lease with me.
For a seven, so what we're gonna do is this, I'm gonna keep, can I keep these pictures?
If you wish.
Do you mind?
Nope.
Okay. We'll keep these pictures. I see your neighbor's sump pump hose. Let me explain a little bit how things should work. And I mentioned earlier with drainage, we want the sump pumps going to the back of the house. We want that. We have built another home, Syntex did a phenomenal job. Unfortunately, homeowners over the years ruined it, but Syntex did a phenomenal job over the years of putting drainage in the backyard to carry the flow of water down to our stormwater drains. Your neighbor's house is above yours, so the water's gonna actually feed back to your property. There is a swale in the back of your property. Now, looking at these pictures, it may need some work done to keep the water flowing, 'cause it looks like it does back up there, but your neighbor's sump pump is supposed to flow to the back of the property. That's correct. Now, it's supposed to be 10 feet away from your property line. Looking at this picture of the hose, it looks like it's flexible, which means they may have sometimes have it closer to your fence than should be, should not be. So what we're gonna do is this, now that the snow's all melted, we got the wet season going on, when definitely your picture's from six years ago, you're right, your yard was very, we're gonna go out and we're gonna re-inspect it again. We're gonna see exactly where the sump pump is just charging. If it's too close to your property, we're gonna make him correct that. He may have to shorten his hose to make sure it doesn't get down within 10 feet. It's gotta be 10 feet away from your property line. That's village ordinance and all that. And now, the property, the water is going, from these pictures, in the drainage area. Because the way the topographical of the properties are, unfortunately, in a perfect world, half the drainage should be on your neighbor's property, half the drainage should be on your property. But it doesn't always work that way, depending on the topographical of the property and all that. And in your case, we looked at the diagrams, the majority of the swale is on your property. It's the way it was laid out by Syntex 40, 50 years ago when they built the homes there. But the water should be there, but it should drain from there. It shouldn't sit. So we're well aware of it now, looking at the pictures and all that. Give us a chance, 'cause it definitely looks like the one area, back corner by your neighbor's guy detached garage, it looks like, on the one side. It looks like the water's backing up there. Now, it looks like he's got land behind it, but looking at these pictures, it looks like it might be built up behind it, which is not letting the water drain away from your property.
Right.
And there's a big tree.
Right, it's going right to the, yeah, to their garage, and it's gonna be lifting up their garage next.
So that, that's why, looking at this, just, I have faith in my engineers, I have full faith in my engineers. But looking at these pictures I'm showing here, I like the picture of the ducks.
Yeah, that was just this week, the ducks.
So let me, let me, 'cause I'm looking at that picture, your neighbor's, you got a big tree, and you can see the ground is higher, which is, could be one of the reasons why your water's sitting stagnant in that one corner in most of your pictures. Let us go back out now that the snow's gone, the winter's over, the ground. Let's go back out, and we're gonna shoot grades again. We'll come out with our system, we'll shoot the leveling, we'll shoot the flow, we'll shoot all that. We'll double-check your neighbor behind you, make sure his sump pump's not close to 10 feet from your fence. And let us look into this to see if there may be some work that needs to be done to help the flow which work for you. The bottom line's gonna be this, oh, Ms. Cooper is, or Carroll, I'm sorry, Ms. Carroll, is the water's gonna come back there. It's where it's supposed to flow to, but once it flows back there, it needs to drain down the street to the storm sewer. It looks, just looking, and I'm not an expert yet by any means, but looking at the picture you gave, and that's why this grass died here, 'cause the water sits too long, it looks like it might be getting caught up at that one end. If that's the case, we're gonna find a way to get that fixed for you, so the water flows away from your property. So his sump pump will drain back there, but then the water should drain away from your property down to the storm sewer that's further down. So let me keep these, this helps a lot. Let me go back to my staff. We're gonna review everything again. We'll come out and take some pictures, see what's going on, and make sure that it works fine for you.
I would just like for him to go back to what he was doing six years ago, and keeping the water in his yard.
But where was it draining? Because I can tell just from the pictures, this property's definitely higher than you.
Oh, yeah.
So wherever it came out of the sump pump, 'cause I can see it exits the back of his house there, under by his deck, it's gotta go in his backyard.
He was containing it in his yard, and all of a sudden, five years ago, he decided he was gonna start flooding my yard.
But what did he change to stop the flow?
Did he put a hose extension on?
He put a long hose extension.
Okay.
Yeah. And this is what I keep being told, the 10-foot rule. Well, so what?
Well, here's, well, here's why you have the 10-foot rule.
I understand that.
It makes sense. I don't blame him. If his sump pump's draining right in the middle of his backyard, he would have no dry area for his family, his kids, his dogs to play in. That's why we wanted it to within about 10 feet of the backyard, 'cause the drainage in the backyard, the swale that takes the water away, starts about 5 to 10 feet off each property line. So that's why we want the sump pump to discharge there. In a perfect world, it would go in that swale and go right down and get away. That way, you got, most of your yard's gonna be dry and available, so it makes sense why we do that. I mean, I respect that, 'cause if you have kids, you don't run it through, 'cause if you don't drain it far enough back, it's gonna be in the middle of your yard, now you have a swamp in the middle of your yard. Because your backyard middle part doesn't have the drainage canal, the swale, to take it away. So I can understand if that was the reason why he did it. But the problem doesn't appear, the hose, the problem appears from the pictures, that it's not draining away from your backyard once it gets there. And just looking preliminarily, I'm not an expert, at that garage, that detached garage next to you and the big tree there, and you can see the ground higher than your yard, that's making like a natural dam and cause that water to sit there. So let us reexamine it, we'll review it, find out what's going on, we will get back in touch with you.
Mm-hmm.
And let you know exactly what's going on. Before they get back in touch with you, they will personally let me know what's going on. So I'll be aware, I'll notify the board of everything going on, so we'll be fully aware, and let's see if we can get this resolved for you and taken care of.
I hope so. 'Cause, you know, it's just not the water setting there, it's the full force that it comes at my yard and the destruction that it has done.
Okay, we can look and see, let us, our guy, our folks now with everything drained or all this snow, let's look, we can see, you can see, what happens is, when the sump pump ejects out sometimes, it actually starts creating its own swale. We'll see what kind of force is coming out and what's doing. We'll take a look at that for you.
I appreciate that, and who, who, who talked to my tenants and said they, they weren't disturbed?
One of the engineering people, when they came out one time.
Yeah, well, that's, that's not true.
To look at, they didn't mention that, I guess, your tenant was out.
They mentioned what?
And they said they were from the village, your tenant was there, and they said they were from the village looking at the property.
Right.
They always identify themselves, which they should do.
Sure.
And your tenant seemed like he had no problem.
No.
So, but I'm not worried now about what your tenant said.
Not true.
I'm gonna have our staff go out and look at the physical yard, what's going on, what the flow looks like, and see if we can address that for you.
I appreciate that.
No problem.
Who'll be contacting me back?
You will hear back from Mary Jo herself, or head of our entire engineering department, Mary Jo Pie, Ms. Pie. We'll get back to you. But she will let me know and the board know what's going on, so we'll be well aware. So in case you got further ask issues, we'll be aware of it, too, and we'll be able to answer questions.
I appreciate your help.
Oh, no.
I just wanna preserve the value of my property, and, you know, eventually someday sell it, but.
Right. We wanna make sure it's in good shape, too.
I do.
We want all the homes to look good, and appreciate it. And I do thank Frank, I'm sorry, the mayor of Bensonville for reaching out to us, and so gave us a chance to get stuff ready, but your pictures are very good.
Thank you.
And you're right, my first, the first one, it was, look how beautiful your yard is, nice and green.
Right.
And I saw it six years ago, so.
Yeah, and if you look at the other picture of, of the back of the yard where he's extending his hose once again, that's what it looks like now.
Yeah. Well, we're, we're gonna review it, we'll look at it, and we'll definitely get back to you quickly and let you know what we can do.
Thank you. And I reached out to our mayor because I was getting no help at all for five years from your people, so that's why I'm here tonight.
And I appreciate you coming. I just wanted to let you know, we've got the best staff out there. There may have been some misunderstanding, maybe when they talked to your tenant, there was mis, whatever, but we're on it now.
Okay.
We'll make sure we follow up with you, we'll get it taken care of.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Have a good night, ma'am.
And you do the same.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come tonight? Okay.
Can I have a question? I see our friend, Mr. Rittenbacher is in the back. Is he here for a reason?
I'm not sure. Tom, are you here for a reason?
Yes, he's here for a reason.
He was here for the swearing-in. Miss Delja?
Oh.
Oh, okay.
I thought maybe he was here when Schmidt was getting sworn in.
We thought that was happening tonight.
Okay. It'll be a meeting, yeah, the 28th. We're gonna have some, we're some, anyone here, we're gonna have some cookies, coffee cake, whatever. So tell him it's worth coming back, we'll have some goodies for him when he comes back.
And it's good to see you, no matter what time.
I would check with us first, though, because the background check has not come back yet on him, so we may not have been sure on him then.
So, Mr. Petzow, getting good?
Yes, sir.
How's Mr. Nick about you tonight?
Well, excellent job, as usual.
Oh.
Oh, boy.
So he's not our ex-attorney anymore? He should stay on?
Yes, sir.
Six more years?
Ooh. Oh.
Longer? Two years? What you, hey, what are you, don't pepper him. Okay, with that all complete, I need a motion to adjourn. Now, we don't come back for three weeks, folks. Motion to adjourn. We have motion by Trustee Zarnik, sent by Trustee Petri. Glory, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Listner?
Aye.
Trustee Petri?
Aye.
Trustee Prackno?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
Trustee Fechter?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn passes 6-0. Folks, have a good night. Meeting adjourned.